I'll call the Asheville City Council meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. If you could put your phones on silent, this is a preliminary matter. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
It must be summer break.
One more.
Yes. Maggie, if you could set the timer for, I guess we'll do point of orders.
Three minutes, you'd be able. My point of order tonight is not about the prayer, but the prayer is a part of it. It's action that reflects a belief. You each sit in your position because the state of North Carolina gave the authority to the voters of the city of Asheville to install you into office. Each of you, when you took that office, swore an oath. Is that not right, Madam Mayor? And in that oath, you swore to uphold all of North Carolina's constitutional law. My question is, because of your behavior, because you said that the rule for prayer to be done in this city council, it must be done by one of the city council members. So my question is, does this city council have a lawful right to their seat? And the reason I'm asking that is because the last time I was here, I made a statement, and it was a reaction of one of the city councilmen that made me wonder, am I right? Do you have a lawful right to sit on those seats? Under North Carolina constitutional law, Bothwell was the one that first found out about it, because when he first ran for city council, it was assumed that he was an atheist. So the statement was, he could not run for city council because North Carolina constitutional law stated, you must be a Christian, not a Muslim, not a Hindu, but a Christian. They were specific, based under the Apostles' Creed or the Neocene Creed. Now, it never got resolved, because Bothwell immediately claimed that he was some other Unitarian belief. And if I remember right, the Unitarian belief does not fall under the Christian belief. I may be wrong, but according to the Neocene Creed, they did not accept Jesus Christ as the Son of God born at the Virgin Mary. I can read it to you if you want. Now, my question is this, by your behavior, you have put into question whether you're Christians, because I can't find three Christians to ever get together in a meeting that don't, one of them don't want to pray. And when the mayor said that it is up to you to pray, now one of you raised your hand and said, Your Honor, I'll pray, because it says where two agree, where two come together in my name, there I am in the midst of them. And no wise Christian who believes that the fear of God is the beginning of all wisdom would not want to ask God into his meeting. So my question is now, I do not believe that anyone sitting on this council is a Christian. Now, you swore an oath to uphold the constitution of North Carolina, which means you uphold that the requirement for standing in office is to be a Christian. Now, under oath, I request that each of you right now raise your hand proclaiming that they are a Christian of the Neocene belief or the Apostles' Creed. And you must have a majority of hands to come up to prove you have a lawful right to hold this meeting, which means if you don't, I will be, if I get no hands, except for his, I will, my next, one point.
Okay, we're going to move on. You can speak at the end of the meeting under the public comment section.
No, because I'm not going to stand in an unlawful meeting. As far as I'm concerned, this meeting is unlawful.
You are done now. You have made a point of order.
And I will be seeing a court for an injunction to withhold all decisions by this city council.
Thank you. All right.
Could I offer a brief correction for the people listening? The oath we take is to adhere to the U.S. Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution insofar as it does not conflict with the U.S. Constitution. That clause, it does not say Christian, it says God, is not supported by the U.S. Constitution, and therefore, it's invalid. So you're wrong.
I have a question in our legal council.
No, can you please sit down? All right. Sit down now. We're done with this discussion.
I'm down for this illegal meeting.
Okay, sorry. I need one of these at home.[308.02][308.02](Laughter). All right, so we're going to do the consent agenda next. And I want to pull out item J. And item L is pulled out at the staff's request, not to be considered at this time. Item J to do separately, and then item O to be done separately as well. Can you just hang on? We're going to have a moment for public comment once there's a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Move to approve, except for those two items.
All right.
And I'll second.
All right. All right, I've got a motion and a second to approve those items on the consent agenda. Do I have anyone wishing to make comment on those items? Not including item J, L, and O. Yes.
Ken Michaelov, do any of these items on the consent agenda deal with the Asheville Art Museum or Pac Place in terms of budget amendment?
The budget's later in the agenda.
We're doing the budget later in the agenda.
But you're dealing with budget items under the consent agenda. There are roughly three items under the consent agenda, and you really can't tell exactly what they are. All my question is, is anything in any of these consent items deal with the art museum or Pac Place?
I'm looking at them, and they don't appear to.
Finance officer ought to be able to respond.
Mr. Michaelov, if you're talking about the three items I see, and maybe you need to tell us the three items you see, but the first one is item D2.
Right.
Which deals with water resources, stormwater, parking fund.
That's Craven Street project.
That's the Craven Street project. N2, which does not appear to be a...
APG.
Q is for park maintenance, fire station. Is there any other?
R2.
R2. FEMA.
So there are no items that deal with Pac Place or the art museum? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comment?
Hi, my name's Tim Sadler, and I just have a question on item N, the funds being donated to the police department, and I'm just curious where those funds are coming from and what amount.
You're talking about N? The amendment is in N2, budget amendment, and the amount of $1,100 to appropriate these funds into the city special revenue fund budget.
I can just report, read from the staff report here. The Asheville Police Department has received $1,000 in donated funds from the Brooks Howell Home and $100 from Parker's Carrot Patch Incorporated.
Thank you. And did I, did I hear there was something from, with FEMA, related to FEMA?
R2, yes.
What, how are we working with FEMA, just out of curiosity?
It's regarding a retaining wall.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comment on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll do item J, a resolution naming Fire Station 1 after City of Asheville firefighter Charles Augustus Wern. Am I saying that right? And we have some family members here, along with the chief. If you all would come forward, we just pulled this out just to highlight it for a moment.
Mayor, I would like to introduce, you all have already met, but just introduce for the public, Gus Warehand's wife, Joan Warehand, and his daughter, Teresa, and his brother, Fred. This initiative was started by Gus's brother, Fred. He had this vision of a way to honor Gus, and I'll allow him to say a couple of words.
Mainly just wanted to express appreciation to Chief Burnett for considering this for my brother, naming the main station, the Gus Warehand Station, and the plans for future for others who have fallen, and there's several of those, and he has similar plans there. And wanted to thank the council for considering this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
I move to approve the renaming, or the naming of that fire station for Gus. Second.
Mayor, just to elaborate a little bit, this is our downtown station here, and firefighter Worm passed away in the 1960s, 1962, I believe?
1963.
1963. So it's been a long time coming. Proud to support this.
Anyone wishing to make comment on the motion? No? Anyone else on council? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you again for coming tonight. And we have one final item, item O, a resolution authorizing city staff to proceed with the statutory condemnation process as set forth in Article III of Chapter 40A of the North Carolina General Statutes for the property located at 61 Haywood Road, Asheville, North Carolina, for the public purpose of construction of a sidewalk. And there was just some question about whether or not it was appropriate to keep this on the consent agenda, so just out of an abundance of caution, we're pulling it off. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, anyone wishing to make comment on item O on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, moving on to presentations and reports, we have one tonight, the legislative update, and we will hear from Paul Featherston, making his second, second, third, third appearance in front of the Asheville City Council.
We hit to 150. We'll stop.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Just briefly to update you on where the legislative session is, as you know, the short session started on May the 14th. Originally, we heard that it might be one of the fastest sessions in history, that it might end by this month, but then we heard it was going to be July 4th, and today we heard it was going to be July 11th. There's also been some recent statements by the chairman of the Rules Committee that he may adjourn, the legislature may adjourn without a budget, so it's certainly something to watch. So checking in with our lobbyist today, he advised us that Thursday is the last day of regularly scheduled committee meetings in the Senate, and it's going to be a busy, frenetic week. There's a lot of action happening on, there's conferring on the budget, and also doing a lot of work on some bills. So just to update you on a high level, so the Cole-Ash bill, it's on the Senate floor this afternoon, it's expected to pass. The third reading would be tomorrow, and then referred to the House, and there was no amendments from the bill late last week. Zoning design and aesthetic controls, what we know about this is that the future is uncertain. It's currently in the Senate rules, but the Senate Rules Committee can meet at any time at the call of the chair, and so Jack told us to be prepared that this will, the future of this will remain uncertain until adjournment. 734, this has to do really with fertilizer and environmental ordinances, the ability of local municipalities to enact any ordinances. It was up this morning in House Committee, and it's uncertain what the House will do. 1191 is related to trees. There's been no word about this bill coming up. This bill may have been effectively squashed. The ETJ zoning issue, this clarifies language on planning and zoning authority inside the city limits. If you recall, last year, there was action that was intended to do just the ETJ, but interpretations could be beyond that. They fixed that. It also repeals the CRA, and that passed today. The Public Safety Omnibus Justice Amendments, this includes the penalty for graffiti vandalism. It increases the penalty. It's a felony if the cost to repair is in excess of $1,000, and the person has two or more prior convictions for the violation. It has passed the Senate. It's in the House Appropriations. Was added to the Senate bill and would have to go back to Senate, and it's expected to be finished by the middle of next week.
I think that is correct. I do think that our lobbyists indicated that it may be too much for this session, and it may end up going to the next one, just because it has so much information in it. It's not only the graffiti bill, there's just a whole lot of changes in that act.
H-1145 is the registration required for mopeds. This would require a registration of mopeds, and it would also include a study whether or not insurance should be required. This is of interest to the City of Asheville because of issues that it's having with mopeds on sidewalks.
That's correct.
Then, H-1113 is the Ben Creek Property Sullivan Act exemptions. This passed the Senate Local Government Committee earlier this afternoon. The Asheville Regional Airport, this would provide elected public official representation for, on the Asheville Regional Airport Authority, and this also passed earlier today.
Yeah.
And then economic development, and I'm going to merge two into one. So there's two issues that we watched on this one. This is, one is on the film credit. The Senate turned the incentive program into a pared-down grant. The House then rejected the amendments to the budget, which would renew the credits, and it's in budget negotiations right now. So the film credit issue is in budget negotiations now, because the House and the Senate couldn't agree on how to approach it. Same is kind of true for the historic rehabilitation credits. The Senate rejected a proposal to renew it. The House restored the credits in its budget, and so that is in budget negotiations as well. And then a late coming one, S-493 Regulatory Reform Act. So this addresses two items. One is it eliminates zoning petitions, and the other item introduces new ethics requirements for city councils with a population greater than 7,500. This would require governing boards of city and counties to file a statement of economic interest by April 15th of each year. The elected officials cannot mention their public position in non-governmental ads that advances members or other private interests. Elected members can't use public funds for ads other than an emergency, and they can't disclose non-public information gained in the course of official responsibilities that would affect personal financial interests of them or other people. And again, it only applies to cities of a population of 75,000 or more.
That is the zoning protest petitions, which you may be aware of, and then I think...
It includes, that bill includes that provision?
Correct. Correct. And then, the only other thing I would add, I think that we were told that Paul Meyer has been working very hard, and he believes that he has the 75,000 population provision eliminated. Not guaranteed, but that's where he's going.
I thought this whole bill got sent back to committee.
I thought there was something that happened.
At the end of last week, it did.
We'll check on it. I thought I remember something.
Because I think that there was a pretty interesting quote on the House floor of the bill, the fellow carrying this bill on the House floor, he said, "This ain't my dog, I'm just walking it." Because the bill sponsor wasn't present, and last I heard, it went back to committee. But maybe it's been resurrected.
Well, I'm not sure of that. I just know that in its current form, I think that Paul has gotten whoever needs to, to back off the population limit, I think, or max, or...
And then just a reminder, two bills of significance have been signed into law, the privilege license tax, which is an impact of about $1.6 million, $1.4 million to the City of Asheville, effective July 1, 2015, and the Energy Modernization Act. And that is all we have for you.
It's my understanding there were some assurances regarding the privilege license tax and next year's session.
So there's supposed to be discussion about the municipalities working with the legislature to come up with some solutions that might fill the gap of the revenue loss. That's my understanding, before, in the beginning of the next long session.
I mean, basically, they've said, "Don't worry, we will accomplish tax reform."
The check is in the mail.
Yeah. We shall see. Any other questions? Thank you. Very up to date. I know that things were happening this afternoon, so you got it all in there. All right, we're going to begin the public hearings. Folks who'd like to make comment on any of the items on the public hearings, please remember that you are allowed up to three minutes, or 10 minutes if you're speaking for a group. The first one is a public hearing to consider a conditional zoning of property located at 573 Fairview Road from Neighborhood Business District to Community Business 1 District, conditional zoning for the use of an existing building as an art instruction facility, and a request for landscaping modifications. Jessica Bernstein is here to present this.
Thank you, mayors, members of the council, members of the public. As was stated, this is a conditional zoning request for a single parcel. This site, as you can see on the Exhibit B map, consists of one parcel, just under an acre in size, at 573 Fairview Road. Fairview Road just oriented to, is here to the north, and the property also has significant frontage along Shannon Drive. This is in the Oakley neighborhood. The site is zoned neighborhood business, and as you can see, parcels across Fairview Road are also neighborhood business, as well as immediately adjacent. The remainder of the boundaries are all zoned RS8. The site is currently owned by Helps International Ministries, and it's used for offices. And the new, the proposal is to retain the existing building, a general site layout that you can see here on the aerial, for the new owner, which is Roots and Wings School of Art and Design. They are proposing several uses, offices, preschool, studio space, and instructional services. Currently, only office uses are allowed in neighborhood business. The rest of those uses that they're proposing aren't permitted in neighborhood business. They are in community business, which is a similar low-intensity neighborhood-based zoning district, which is why staff and the applicant selected that as their proposed conditional zoning. As I mentioned, the site will remain primarily the same. Here is a site plan. You can see here's the building, Fairview Road, here's Shannon Drive. The owner will be, the new owner will be reusing the existing building, and a couple of small changes. One is sort of reorienting the flow of traffic currently. Cars can enter and exit from both driveways, but the applicant is proposing for all traffic to enter from Shannon and exit onto Fairview Road. And that reorientation will minimize some traffic impact to the neighbors that are across the street on Shannon Drive. That's a positive change. Also, there, the only other real site change will be landscaping that's required, and that is the basis of the modifications that you've seen in the report. I spoke too soon. There's one other very notable change, and that is the addition of sidewalk. There's currently no sidewalk along Shannon Drive. The applicant's proposing to put a five-foot sidewalk along that full stretch. There's sidewalk on Fairview Road, but the sidewalk that's just here in front of the building is actually flush with the street, and they're going to upgrade that with curb so that it's a safer situation for pedestrians right there. So that is a notable change. I didn't want to leave that one out. But back to the landscaping, because of the adjacent parcels being zoned RS, we've got a landscape property line buffer that's required. The three modifications, one, it would be, there would be that 30-foot buffer required right here. There's just not room because of the existing location of the building. Along the sides here, the back of the property, in lieu of the 30-foot buffer, the applicant's proposing to reduce it by 50%, and that is supported by staff because this entire area here is going to remain as an open space. It's a grass field, and there'll be a playground, so it's really not a high-intensity area. So staff felt that reducing that buffer was appropriate. The third area of noncompliance is along Shannon Drive. They would be required, again, that 30-foot buffer, and in lieu of that, the applicant is proposing to put in a grass strip, and then that sidewalk, separating the sidewalk from the street. And then behind the sidewalk would be a planting strip with street trees, evergreen shrubs, and the street buffer that would be required down here next to the parking lot. So staff is supportive of all of those modification requests. We think, given the improvements to the site, this will, these landscaping improvements will provide some buffering, but it also allows the site to integrate into the neighborhood and not just be walled off with landscaping. So we'd like that. The project was approved with conditions by the TRC on May 19th. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposal on June 4th and recommended unanimous support. The applicant held a community meeting back in May. No opposition has been received. We've received multiple letters and emails of support that were forwarded along to you. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional zoning request from Neighborhood Business to CB1 for the uses that were described and included in your staff report, as well as in the Exhibit List, Exhibit B1 list that accompanied the ordinance. This includes support of the landscape modifications. One note about the list of conditions that's in your packet, we, staff noted in that list that we classified it as an art-based preschool. The applicant is requesting that we just simply classify it as a preschool, although Roots and Wings is an art-based preschool, should their curriculum evolve over time. They don't want to be out of the bounds of their conditional zoning request, so staff was supportive of eliminating that wording. And that concludes my report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Or a motion?
Move approval.
And I'm just making an assumption that the applicant's not here or doesn't wish to speak.
The applicant is here, and I think they, would you like to speak? They are here, if you have any questions for them.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve. Anyone wishing to make comment on the motion? Who has a question?
We're sure there's nobody to speak, right?
Yes. I can open it up for a public comment.
Yeah, we need to do that, I think, quickly.
Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Item A on the public hearings? All right.
Seems like a really great reuse of a building, to me, and a space.
I'm officially closing the public comment period. Anyone else on council, questions, comments? All right, all those...
I just wanted to say that we received many letters of support as well, from parents and others as well, and that helped me make my mind up.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, the next item under public hearings, and I assume we can do these together, Items B1 and B2, public hearing to consider rezoning at 226 Hilliard Avenue from Regional Business District and RS8 Residential Single Family High Density District to Central Business District, an ordinance amending the officially adopted height zone map and context transition edge map pertaining to the rezoning of 226 Hilliard Avenue. Oh, and again, you're doing everything tonight. Okay.
All right, thank you. This is a request for a straight rezoning this time. Subject property consists of five parcels, as you can see on the map, all zoned regional business, with the exception of this very small parcel right here that is zoned RS8, located with frontage along Hilliard Avenue and Ashland Avenue in the CBD. It's currently the location of Hayes and Lunsford's and other associated offices, a single-story building surrounded by surface parking. To give you an idea of where this is, this map shows the outline of the Central Business District, and we're right here, the parcels that are identified in red. This is actually the third request, third similar request that the city has received in the last year. Two other requests came in, and most of you approved them back in 2013, and those were right here and here, along Ashland Avenue. Both requests for straight rezoning from regional business to central business. Because of these multiple requests, staff and the Downtown Commission have started to undertake a zoning study for a corridor-wide rezoning, multi-parcel rezoning. And that's what's shown here on this map. This is the Ashland Avenue CBD expansion study. It's not just because of the requests that have been received, also in the downtown master plan, the maps, several maps that were included in that plan that was adopted back in 2009 showed expanding the CBD in this area along Ashland Avenue. So it's been contemplated by the consultants, it's been by the staff, and now by multiple property owners. And again, here's the two locations that were approved back in 2013, and then the subject property for tonight's consideration is just right there. In this consideration that's been going on, the staff and members of the Downtown Commission met with... met with property owners along the corridor back in January of this year, and that was a kickoff to gauging interest in the multi-parcel rezoning. We had pretty significant interest from the property owners, no opposition. The next step, then, from the staff's perspective, is to reach out to the neighbors that are in this neighborhood, to talk to them about the proposed rezoning. And we just haven't gotten to that step yet because of other workloads, but in the meantime, this, this application came in. That was a lot of background on just what's going on in the area right now. The request for rezoning also includes a request to amend the height zone map. This is that height zone map that you're all familiar with. The areas in blue are our tallest height zone. The areas in green are the intermediate height zone. The Downtown Commission suggested, and staff also recommends rezoning, when we rezon, if we rezon these parcels, that you overlay them with the intermediate height zone. That's similar to what the past two rezonings also had. Additionally, there's a change to the map that has to do with the context transition edge, and those are the areas, sort of the lines shown in orange. This is a provision that's in the Central Business District section of the UDO that protects areas that are residentially zoned, immediately adjacent to CBD. When we have, this is sort of a blow-up of that area, when we've got RS zoning immediately adjacent to CBD, we have the context transition edge, and that limits the height available to the development in the CBD zoning within 100 feet. So the maximum, for within 100 feet, the maximum height that any development in this area would be permitted would be two stories. This is a diagram just lifted from the UDO, sort of illustrates that context transition edge. So when, when we do get an eventual development, that 100-foot area, the 100-foot zone would be a protected area. This proposal to rezone these parcels was discussed by the Downtown Commission at their meeting in May. I've spoken with one neighbor concerned about height and the potential, also, she was concerned about the potential for Grove Street to be opened. That's not a part of this request. That would be considered separately if it ever did come in, but that, that's not a part of this request. We discussed this with the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 4th. They recommended approval of the rezoning by a vote of four to one, with the one dissenting vote was, was just a little uncomfortable about losing a parcel zoned RS8. But because this area is currently targeted by the city for that multi-parcel corridor rezoning, because it's listed in the downtown, or included in the Downtown Master Plan as an area for CBD expansion, staff recommends approval of the rezoning to CBD, as well as the amendment to the height zone map and the context transition edge. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment from Regional Business and RS8 to Central Business.
Let's open the public hearing.
Oh, public hearing.
We have to be retrained, because we've been doing motions and opening public hearings. So we're going to open the public hearing. Actually, I can't remember which one. If there's anyone wishing to make comment on this item, public hearing B1, B2?
I'm not really sure.
I'm going to do B1 and B2 together. Anyone? No?
One other thing, when you make the motion, there is a suggested motion that includes some things that you may want to take a look at that.
Okay. There's the suggested motion, you've got it in front of you. Yes, okay. We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Regional Business and RS8 to Central Business District as a standard rezoning, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, references to CBD expansion in the 2025 plan and the Downtown Master Plan. Two, staff-led multi-parcel corridor rezoning is being pursued. Three, design standards and the application of the context transition edge should minimize impact from future development on adjacent neighborhoods.
Second, and I would add that, as Jessica stated, the Downtown Commission has looked at this very closely, and it's very enthusiastic about the expansion of the CBD, and very cognizant of the concern of the neighborhood about the height. And I think it's really important that we protect those neighbors from really tall buildings, and I think this will do a very good job of doing that, and will allow the CBD to expand in a good way.
Great. Anyone? Nope. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. That concludes the public hearings.
There's two motions.
Yeah, there's two.
Oh, we need a second motion, I'm sorry.
A second public hearing, or is there one public hearing?
No, we did one public hearing.
I think the motion was for both, was it not?
No, he didn't read the "I move to approve."
The second.
He stopped reading before the second half.
In the staff report...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just made the one motion.
Okay, okay. Yes, you need to make a motion on both.
Okay, then I move to approve the officially adopted height zone map and context transition edge map pertaining to the Central Business District regarding the rezoning of 226 Hilliard Avenue, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, the proposed map amendments are in accordance with adopted land use changes. Two, the proposed map amendments implement portions of the City Council adopted Downtown Master Plan, 2025 Plan, and supports the Goals and Vision Plan. And three, the map amendments will support the redevelopment of the south area of downtown and provide protection to adjacent residential uses.
Second.
Okay, we've already had the public hearing. I have a motion and a second. Anyone on council have any questions, comments? Yep, all those, you do, you were about that. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we have concluded the public hearings. Under unfinished business, we are in the final steps of the budget adoption process. Barbara Whitehorn to make the presentation. You have to recreate this every time now, so just make it still interesting.
Okay, so tonight is our final step in adopting the 2014-2015 official budget. The ordinance to adopt is before you. We have some technical adjustments to go over, but I'm just going to give you a quick overview before we get started. Okay, you've all seen this slide, you've all heard that it's a continuation budget, no tax rate increase, meets the council key goals for fiscal year 14-15, and implements the new capital improvement program. The operating budget has changed slightly. There's one technical adjustment that was an increase in, one of the funds, we'll get there, I can't remember, sorry, but the total budget is still $166 million, very small The budget goals, just to go over for the public that is here, the three key goals were begin implementation of the Police Strategic Plan, address employee compensation, and transit system improvements. The additional goals that council has given us were to address graffiti, our big capital improvement program, and to work on a neighborhood sidewalk program. Our technical budget adjustments, these are the critical little things that we have to go over before we can adopt the ordinance. The street cut utility fund, sorry, that's the one that had the impact actually on the total budget, was the $67,000 addition of two full-time positions. The city attorney's office, I have this written as if it's, that's the done-deal plan. That is not correct. What we're trying to provide is flexibility to the city attorney to reallocate funds as necessary in her reorganization of the department to be most effective. And our capital improvement program, as you're all aware, we reallocated $100,000, $50,000 from Charlotte Street and $50,000 from Town Branch Greenway to do the first $100,000 funding of the neighborhood sidewalk program. Our other technical budget adjustment, I was going to redo this slide, but I'm sure none of you want to watch me fumble with technology for five minutes, so that I can add one bullet point that says, per best practices, we are adding the council itemized salaries in the budget ordinance. You have a new copy of the budget ordinance now. It has no effect on the numbers, because they were already in the budget itself, but we are itemizing them in the ordinance now. All right, fees and charges manual changes. Stormwater rate structure, this is, this implementation is delayed until October 1st, 2014, so that we can go through public education and making sure we have all of our ducks in a row. Tiered system by impervious surface, I know you've all heard this over and over, that the smallest homes will be $2.50 a month, $4.00 a month, and the largest impervious surface areas will have $5.50 a month for stormwater fees. Parks and Recreation athletic fees, we provided you all with additional information about how we arrived at those numbers, and they're to be adopted as proposed in March. Transit monthly and annual passes, we're delaying implementation of the increase in fees for review. Right-of-way cut permit penalty, this is a civil penalty that we are going to remove from the fees and charges manual, that's not where it belongs, so we'll be bringing it to you as a separate ordinance. And here's our budget process calendar, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, it's like my final slide every time. We're on the very last day, June 24th, budget adoption. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
Any questions?
Mayor. Question about the nondepartmental community development, the budget highlights, the first point is, the city has $98,400 set aside to allocate for strategic partnerships, outside agencies. I assume that's the cosponsored events like we do with Downtown Association, and have done in the past with Evelyn, with the toy run for sponsorship for the annual event that occurs, is that what that is?
I believe it is, but Tony McDowell, our budget manager, can assure us of that.
Yeah, and that is the money that goes to the outside agencies. I don't have the full list before me, but I think you all took action at your last meeting to formally adopt that funding. I know some of it went to YWCA, One Youth at a Time, those kind of agencies.
Okay, and perhaps I missed that, but there has been some concerns about some of those agencies that, and it says in this that we would be doing it later, so I assume that we, that's what we did earlier. Did we, did we include Evelyn in that, on the toy run? It's an in-kind sponsorship that we do with police and barricades and that sort of thing in the holiday season.
And if it's in-kind, it's not reflected here in these numbers.
Okay, so it's not reflected. I don't want to lose sight of that, that's a very important thing, because that's, they are the collecting body for all the toys and things like that, for, they've gone to get a lot of the nonprofits, and that, that's a very important function. I just don't want to miss it in here.
Let us, Your Honor, if it's okay with the council, make a note to research what provision we've made for that in our work plan for the coming year, and report back to council.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? A motion?
You want a motion, or? A motion to adopt the budget.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 2014-15 annual budget. Those wishing to make comment, please do so at this time.
My name's Ken Michael Love, and the subject is Pack Place and the Art Museum. Issues regarding the hostile takeover of Pack Place by the City Council is the subject. No provisions have been made by the City Council to deal with the needs of the YMI. City Council has moved the capital expense item of the Asheville Art Museum Economic Development Project in the 2014 budget to Pack Place maintenance without a proper budget amendment, and without proper explanation to the public. Also, the purpose change from economic development to be done in 2014 to a maintenance project of a building to start in 2017. Consequently, this action made at least two cents of the three-cent 2014 tax increase entirely unnecessary. City Council is contemplating a change in organizational structure of operations of Pack Place through direct leasing to the Asheville Art Museum and Diana Wortham Theater. This change will eliminate $400,000 that Buncombe County has been funding operations at Pack Place. The 2015 city budget makes no provision to assume this expense. Direct leasing to tenants of Pack Place, the Art Museum, Diana Wortham Theater, given the notice to the City Council by the Pack Place Board to renew the existing lease for 10 years, is illegal. If the City Council pursues this direct leasing, the Pack Place Board has the right and the obligation to take legal action against the city. Further, if the City Council completes the direct leasing with two tenants, the Pack Place Board has the right and the obligation to collect money from the city of Asheville in accordance with the current lease. That is an estimated $2 million plus. The city budget does not make provisions for this payment. Plus, there's over $800,000 in capital improvement items the City Council is requiring Pack Place to make. If that is correct, the City Council will have to assume that obligation in addition to the $2 million capital expense. Finally, there are other expenses, mainly building code compliance, that could cost upwards to $3 million. That's a total forecast of roughly $6 million without considering the cost of operations. And it is not minimal operations I am forecasting. Amongst other expenses, the city will be responsible for a full-time clerk of the works, or a person of similar title to oversee renovations of Pack Place that the Art Museum is planning. The City Council has made no provision of paying these expense in this budget. City Council, by pursuing direct leasing with two tenants, will put Pack Place out of business. City Council...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to make comment on the motion? Okay, seeing none. Are there any other questions or comments from members of council?
I have just a comment, Mayor. Just, done this a few times, just want to make one more run at it. Gary, thanks so much for your and Barbara's diligence in presenting this thing, and really working to make sure that it was meeting council's strategic goals, and that we're ringing every last drop of blood out of this turnip. And the, the commitment and diligence you all have shown has been really appreciated. I don't think we've ever had as thorough a presentation as, as we've got here, and, you know, we've still got all these, we've still got a limitation on our resources that you all are trying to work within, and we can't do everything that we would like to do. And so your prioritization has helped us, I think, stay focused on what's, not only what's possible, but what's best and highest use for these taxpayer dollars. So I just wanted to thank staff for all your work.
I'd add, Gary, that if you and Barbara have spare time, you might want to call the legislature and help straighten out the state budget.
Mayor, I, I too appreciate the work that's gone into this, and having, you know, followed this process over the past several months, I, I recognize there's a lot in there, there's compromises in there, but I'm proud that we are taking on the five-year capital improvements budget here, and, and all that's going to achieve for our city in the future here. I think there's a lot of exciting projects ahead. I'm also proud that, that we've been able to compromise and find, you know, solutions, you know, when this started out, the proposal for the stormwater increase was higher, but that we talked about that, and how to make it a more equitable increase, and, and so for homeowners with small homes and small properties, it's a very, very minimal increase, but those with much larger homes, it's slightly higher, but it's still relative to other cities in this state, it's significantly below, and I think folks need to know that. And that, I also appreciate the implementation of the neighborhood sidewalk program there. Certainly, some of us would like to see more funding for that, but I think it's an important step forward, and, and we can revisit that in future years as, as, as we move forward on this process here. But thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've adopted the budget. New business, I will hand it over to the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council interviewed candidates for two different commissions. The first is the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. There's one spot to fill this evening for that committee. We interviewed two candidates, Teddy Jordan and Julie Hansbury, and I am going to ask to start at this end with Councilman Whistler, and let's just...
And I am going to ask to start at this end with Councilman Whistler, and let's just move in order this way and cast our vote, and we'll see which of those candidates might have at least four votes.
Teddy Jordan.
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 Teddy Jordan has it, seven to zero. You got that, Maggie?
And she's here. Congratulations.
But just in case Julie Hansbury is watching, please stick around and please continue to be involved. Really impressed with your attitude and energy and hope to really include you in the future.
Yes, ditto.
And by the way, Teddy, I think it was mentioned during the interview that the group has a half-day retreat Thursday.
I hope you're available from nine to one Thursday.
And you can check with Chris and others about scheduling someone. Thank you. Second appointment interviews related to the Public Art and Cultural Commission, there are two spots open. We interviewed four, we interviewed three candidates, Jay Miller, Jay Fields, Jenny Bowen, and Denise Drury is a fourth candidate who was not able to be interviewed but who asserted her candidacy. This time, we'll start with Councilman Smith. And why don't we offer our two preferences, Gordon, each of us as we go down, and we'll see if two candidates end up with four votes. If not, maybe we'll have one and we can do a second round.
Fields and Bowen?
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Miller and Bowen?
Fields and Drury.
Sounds like Fields and Bowen had four each, at least four each.
Fields had five. Bowen had five. And Drury and Miller each had one.
Great. So both of the?
I think that, I apologize, can, I apologize, can we do that again?
Fields and Bowen.
More slowly.
Okay.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Miller and Bowen.
Fields and Drury. It's six, six, one and one, so it's.
Fields and Bowen.
Fields and Bowen.
Jay Fields and Jenny Bowen are appointed. Finally, the agenda item has us deciding whom, if anybody, to interview for the airport board appointment. Bob Roberts is listed as the single candidate in play now. He's an existing member of the Airport Authority eligible for appointment to a second term. We understand that he would be a candidate to chair the airport board going forward. We talked about this two weeks ago at our Boards and Commissions Committee. The Paul Featherstone outlined that the legislation related to the airport and the makeup of the airport board is underway, and that's becoming a little more clear as it seems headed toward passage. So based on our discussion two weeks ago and what we know now about the clarity of the legislation, I would move that we go ahead and appoint Bob Roberts to that seat tonight.
Second.
Any, I suppose we could take any public input, public comment if there is any, seeing none, any further council discussion on that. All in favor of Bob Roberts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. That concludes the new business. I have three folks signed up for public comment. The first is Ken Mike Love, and I see that Mr. Mike Love is not in the chamber. The next is Timothy Sadler. We're getting feedback on that mic now still.
We thought we had it there, so we'll try to.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I have a suggestion, something that I ask you to contemplate, and that is to set a goal, similar to how we have a goal for climate reduction, but for local food production. I believe it's ASAP has thrown out a number that we get about 2% of the food that we consume here locally, and of course, that's not very sustainable. Now, we're doing, we're doing great and probably better than many municipalities in the country, but, you know, we could really be a leader, you know, in the local food movement by setting that goal. I have no idea what that number would be. The first step would obviously be to benchmark how much of each crop, you know, we're consuming on a residential and commercial basis, and there's some great nonprofits in the area that would be potentially able to help in that regard. The second comment I have is something I've mentioned before, and that's to bring on a new staff member within the Office of Sustainability to analyze the impact of new development. And wanted to kind of use an example of how something like that might look. There's a new company in town, they have a product called the Smart Wall, and the Smart Wall is a green building material that has an R value of over 50. And when you take the material cost and the labor cost against traditional construction material cost and labor cost, it's about a wash. So if we could encourage developers to look at such a system, of course, we'd be addressing keeping our carbon emissions down, but more than that, we'd just be doing the right thing for the planet and people. So I believe I'm just about out of time. Thank you all.
Thank you. And the last person I have signed up tonight is Dan Bridges.
Currently on the volunteer handicap enforcement for the city of Asheville. Thank you. How do I get this? This is South Carolina's handicap placard. Firm, strong, and easily identifiable. This is North Carolina's trash. These pla, these two placards were in vehicles that I looked at. You can see, there's basically six years alleged use on these. These are lasting less than six months in cars on the road. I request, if possible, that the city council petition the state to upgrade their placards. They are nothing but a piece of trash. I have contacted the state three times, and the last time, I suggested that they sent whoever approved these placards to a mental institution. I doubt if that will happen, but government bureaucracy at work. What these placards are, we are required to look at the expiration date and the serial number on them. Can anybody tell me what the expiration date or serial number on the top one is? And people, these are in good shape. These two placards are in good shape compared to what I see on a daily basis. The placards from Ohio State are very nice placards. The placards from Connecticut are very nice placard. North Carolina, this is about 20-pound paper that they're using, and they're not lasting. The people are paying $5 for those. This one here with a picture on it of who it belongs to is costing the consumer $1. But North Carolina has a sleeve that you can buy to put on this one. This placard costs you $5, plus for another $5, you can buy a plastic sleeve for it. This is a ripoff of the handicap individual, in my opinion. I would like to see the city council petition the state to upgrade their placards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask him a question?
Yes.
Sir, tell me, now I know about the placards that hang on the rearview mirrors, what are, where are these hanging on?
They hang, the South Carolina placard hangs on the mirror, but the Asheville has a procedure that they do not have to hang on the rearview mirror. They can be put on the driver's side dash. And when I see people, I suggest that they put them on there, and I carry a roll of packing tape with me, and I have taped together probably 40 placards for the consumer rather than give them a citation. People have been informing me that they go to the DMV when I tell them to get a replacement at no cost, that there are out of placards at the, some of the DMV offices. Remember, the DMV offices that issue these are contract employees. They don't really care.
Sure.
All they want is that $5 or the $10 for the placard in the sleeve.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, we have a closed session, but we will not be adjourning from the closed session, so go ahead.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter 132 of the general statute. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NCGS 143-31810E. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS 143-318 dot 11A1. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties, the state of North Carolina, the city of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318 dot 11A3.
Second.
Okay. We are in, we are, what are we? Are we recessed to the closed session? Yes.
Have to vote in the ready.
Do we have to vote?
Oh, we have to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. I like this one.